All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the 2025 Garrett Park Candidates Forum. My name is Stephen Welker. I am the president of the Garrett Park Citizens Association. If you don't know who we are, the C.A. organizes townwide events such as the Fourth of July festivities, Spooky Woods, Brew Fest, annual town dinner, and at the Town Hall. But we also serve as the forum for public discussion of matters of public community interest. And the most important way we do that by far is hosting the annual Candidates Forum. I'm joined by Secretary Betty Foutt right here, Treasurer Rory Smith in the front there, and Vice President Tom DeChara. And as an aside, we're going to start ramping up our Fourth of July planning right after this. So be prepared, and we hope to hear some of your ideas about that, too. I want to welcome our candidates for elective office. This year, we're asked to fill three council spots. For the three council seats, we have five candidates: Chris Deutsch, Donna DeBosch, Stephen Paskowski, Phil Schulp, and John Stroud. You might notice one of them is missing. Donna DeBosch had an unexpected and unavoidable conflict, causing her to have to miss this forum. She has provided me with an opening statement, which I will read. So the Candidates Forum. It's an opportunity for all Garrett Park citizens to get to know their future town leaders and ask respectful but probing questions about each candidate's governing philosophy and goals for the next term. Our plan tonight is to hear a three- to five-minute opening statement from each candidate, after which we will open the floor to residents for about an hour. But we won't try to shut anyone down if there's still good debate and time hasn't dragged on. And then we'll close with a short two-to-three-minute closing statement from each candidate, and I will be serving as a moderator. Feel free to ask your questions in the chat. My goal in moderating is to ensure that we cover as many topics as possible and that each candidate has a fair and equal opportunity, or relatively equal opportunity, to speak. This meeting is first and foremost a forum for the candidates to express their views on topics that are important to the town and is not the appropriate venue to extensively debate a particular topic. And I hope when people come up that they don't use it as a soapbox and that they sort of get to the point, because I think we all want to hear from the candidates. So questions should generally be asked so every candidate can ask them. I mean, obviously, we have some incumbents here and we have some newbies. So some of them are more equipped probably to talk about past decisions on the council than others, but try to keep your comments general and maybe less, you know, "Why didn't you do this?" or things like that. You know, this is friendly. You know, it goes in everyone's best interest to keep things civil. These folks are running for elective office, but they're also our neighbors, first and foremost, and they're donating their time and putting themselves out there for what can sometimes be a thankless, frustrating job. So I'd ask you to join me in giving them a round of applause and thanking them for joining us. So it's pretty easy, if you're here, what to do. You just walk up to the mic and you wait in line if there's a line. And then, you know, you state your name, you state your street, and you ask your question. If you're online, you know, make sure you're in a quiet area. Please make sure that you are muted generally. I hope everyone is currently muted. But once you, if you want to speak, you can raise your hand. I actually see some people are not muted, so please learn how to mute your Zoom. If you want to speak and you're on Zoom, raise your hand and we'll call on you. And then, you know, we'll ask you to unmute yourself. Finally, if you want to submit something in the chat, Betty is monitoring the chat, and she will ask the question on your behalf. Is anyone a moderator of the Zoom?
I can have them.
I think that's on our, yep, thank you. Okay. So I think we're ready to go. We're going to start with opening statements, and I'm going to start with Donna's and read hers. And then we're going to go in alphabetical order, starting with Chris. So I'm going to read Donna's now, and this is the rest for Donna, because, as I said, she had an unavoidable conflict today. All right. Good evening, Garrett Park neighbors. My sincere apologies for not being able to be present for this forum. But please let me share a few words in this way. My name is Donna DeBosch. I am running for town council because I believe in building a community where every voice is heard, respected, and valued. I am not here with all the answers. I'm here to listen, to learn, and to work alongside all of you to shape a future we can be proud of. I have served Garrett Park as council member in the past, and I hope you perhaps remember my openness and ability to think outside of the box. We're living in a time of change, and with that comes opportunity. Opportunity to make smarter decisions about growth, sustainability, and our public services. Opportunity to create spaces where everyone feels welcome, regardless of age, income, background, or beliefs. And opportunity to lead with empathy, not ego. My commitment is to be open-minded in dialogue, inclusive in policy, and forward-thinking in planning. We can't afford to get stuck in the way things have always been. Together, let's create a town that works not just for today, but for the generations to come. Thank you. Chris.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Thank you to the Citizens Association for putting this event together and for hosting, keeping us organized and informed, and, most importantly, having fun. I so deeply appreciate all that you do. So my name's Chris Deutsch. I'm a native Washingtonian. I grew up in southeast D.C. until November 2023. I lived in the northeast neighborhood of Rosedale with my wife Kristin and our four boys Leon, Arlo, Harvey, and Cyrus. And truth be told, it should probably be Kristin up here, because if she can convince this city slicker to move, she can convince anyone of just about anything. The truth is, it was a pretty difficult decision, and I was reluctant. And we visited countless houses in countless neighborhoods, and nothing felt right, of course, until we came to Garrett Park. This town welcomed us in ways I could never have imagined and ways I can only hope to repay. It's a place that was warm and open. And one thing that appealed greatly to me, rightfully proud of its history. And I was thinking just this morning about our first night in our new home. When around midnight, a train rumbled by with its whistle blowing, and we shot out of bed, and Kristin uttered an expletive. And I remember chuckling and thinking, for some reason, it just sounds like home. Strathmore, our little stretch of Strathmore embodies so much about why I want to serve. So to our left are Steffi and Dan, who moved in a few months after us, and just welcomed one of the newest residents of Garrett Park, a beautiful baby girl. And to our right is Pat, who has lived here for over 50 years. I think that's something that makes this town really special. That balance between longstanding roots and fresh beginnings. And I'm running for council because I want to help our town maintain that delicate balance. So I believe in communication and compromise. I believe in following through in our obligations, not just to the town as a whole, but to one another as neighbors. One thing I can't profess is deep institutional knowledge of every single issue facing the town. What I can tell you is that over the last month, much to the chagrin of my wife and my children, I have spent my time watching old candidate forums and reading the minutes of town council meetings, going back several years, and poring over data from some of the recent surveys. I wanted to better understand the issues we face, the challenges we face, the points of friction, which we can agree there are some. But most importantly, to better understand our common ground. So I can't give a lot of perspective on the last season of The White Lotus, but I can tell you I have been doing my homework. And at the risk of getting too political at this political event, I would close with this. We obviously live in fraught and divided times. But I do believe, when you cut through the noise, the heart and soul of this country is most evident in rooms like this, where our community comes together to do the sometimes mundane but always important work of civic life. This is a room where unity can still exist. Engagement builds trust. Where the decisions we make have a very real impact on our neighbors. This is where we model democracy in its purest form, and it's a room I want to be in. Where local people addressing local issues and working to make this place better for all generations and their dogs, who are fortunate enough to call Garrett Park home. So I hope to earn your trust and your vote. I'm really looking forward to answering your questions. Go Caps. Thank you.
Stephen.
Oh, I forgot I was second. So Stephen Paskowski, running for my fifth term. So it's added up the numbers, that's eight years of service. And I added up some other numbers. I realize I moved here 16 years ago. It was 2009 that my wife Chwan and I moved here. So it kind of shocked me a little bit that half of my time has been serving here on the council that I've been here. And probably seven of the eight years prior to that, I was doing various other volunteer work around town. First started with doing graphics, trying to explain what we have for land use and zoning. And I think that's an ongoing topic that we're challenged. And I've been fortunate to be able to provide some expertise on that. I work as an architect and a planner. And I don't have the best written notes here, because it's a really busy week so far. But I look back on those eight years, and I realize it's just, or really the 16 years, I realize very little has changed in this town, which I think a lot of people value that. But I always look at things of kind of from the design lens, but I also have a lot of historic preservation experiences. Like, what's the best? We can make something. And I have this picture, postcard idea in my head of like how this town could improve. And it's just been, it's been challenging, I think, working the eight years on this council, trying to move things forward. I realize the only, other than routine maintenance and street repavings, things like that, the only thing we really done was Safe Routes to the School, which was a federal-funded project to put in just simple sidewalks in suburban streets. And that took eight years, a lot of fighting about that. And I wish I could say that the end product was great, but it was really a tortured process. And I think aesthetically, it ended up not really being anywhere near what it could be. So I'd like to improve those kind of things. And I think it's, I still look back on it now. Like, every time I drive down Old Georgetown Road, I see all the bike paths that were built. And I think in four years or whatever since those have been built, I think I've seen four bicycles on them. But every time I see, I ran here and I drive by the sidewalks. It's almost every time I see somebody on a sidewalk. And that was the big argument. We don't need them. We don't, you know, we shouldn't have them. So I think, I wish the town could get past kind of those things and just have a little bit more trust, a little bit less fear of change, and try to start doing some of these things better. Because we were stuck with what we have now for 50 years with those sidewalks, and they could have looked twice as good as what they do. But a lot of it was like a tennis unforced error, what was happening. So, and I looked back at what I originally ran on in 2017. I thought about running in 2015, but I wasn't as passionate as many others were in town about yes or no on sidewalks, so I waited till after the decision was made on it. But I was surprised, two council members at the time voted against even taking the federal funding. And I look back, that my goals were to do SRTs well. I think we did the best, at least I contributed the best I could, but it was very challenging. Town Hall was another reason I joined. And now we're halfway through design. We only recently got the capital assembled to do that. We actually got some good news that we might be in better shape than we even thought. The third thing I ran on was trying to improve active recreation. So I'm proud that, you know, I fought really hard to try to get the ball moving on that. Sorry for the pun, but we are planning to improve the ball field that's next to the pool this year. But that was even, that was a struggle to kind of get going. But I think it's this part and parcel of the town. But I am willing to continue on. I want to see these projects through, and I want to see us perhaps be able to make better progress, better aesthetic decisions, better pace on things, and actually make that town, or make this town get better to that kind of picture, postcard potential that I see that we just don't have. So I'd like to, going into my second 16 years here, I'd like to see some of those things finally done. It's partly a little bit disappointed that some of those things have taken that long. So I'm willing to do my part, and I hope to have your vote to kind of continue out those projects and get closer to that vision.
Hello, everyone. Excuse me. Thanks for joining us today. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Phil Schulp. I think I know quite a few of you here. Gene and I, my wife, been here for quite a while. And I'm deeply honored to seek another term as your Garrett Park Council member. Serving this community has been one of the greatest privileges of my life, and I am passionate about continuing to work for our beloved town. Each candidate brings valuable perspectives to the table. However, I believe my unique blend of experience, dedication, practical, and practical approach makes me the best candidate to address our community's needs. I've read each candidate's bio carefully. I agree that balancing our historical roots with future growth is important. In fact, it's something that we as a town have been doing for years. I believe that every resident's voice should be heard, and not only when the town begins to scope out a project. I have a proven track record with seeking resident input throughout each phase of the project. Local governments demands a deep personal understanding of our town's unique needs. My extensive experience in leading infrastructure improvements and community projects in Garrett Park has equipped me to navigate the financial complexities with a heartfelt commitment to our town. As always, it is nice to have fresh perspectives so that our residents see continuous improvement. My practical, problem-solving approach and dedication to active listening ensure that I have and will continue to address current challenges with the innovative solutions that resonate with our community's heart and soul. As your council member, I am committed to transparency, conciseness, accountability in governments. These have been my guiding principles since day one on the council. I will continue to support community meetings, surveys, and other forms of engagement to ensure your voices are heard. My future plans include improving accessibility, securing funding for initiatives, and renovating the Town Hall to serve current and future Garrett Parkers. Together, we can achieve progress and ensure our town thrives. I respectfully ask your vote May 5th to continue serving Garrett Park with dedication, integrity, and a deep love for our community.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Now, this is the fun part. This is your chance to come up with your, oh my goodness. And my fun part, I meant John Stroud. Let's hear it.
Really suggested sitting in order.
Wow. Yeah. Okay.
Well, good evening, everyone. And thanks so much to Steve and Tom and Rory and Betty and the rest of the Citizens Association for facilitating and hosting the Candidates Forum tonight. And a special thank you to my fellow candidates. I know Donna couldn't make it, but Chris, Steve, and Phil for being willing to volunteer their time and their energy to continue to improve our wonderful town. My name is John Stroud, and I live on Kenneworth Avenue, along with my wife Gina, a physician at NIH, and our son Kai, who is, believe it or not, a freshman at WJ. I am beyond thrilled to be here with you tonight because my family and I are just incredibly grateful to be a part of this amazing community. I currently serve on the Garrett Park Pool Board, and I am continually looking for meaningful ways to repay the gift of having the opportunity to raise my family here. If fortunate enough to be elected, I feel I'd be a worthy steward as a member of the Town Council and would always pursue that work with an eye towards the future of our community. After I finished business school in 2005, my work focused on giving financial advice to fossil-fuel power plants. I would then spend my weekends with the Surf Rider Foundation, picking up trash off the beach. To say the least, my professional life was really out of sync with my personal ethics. I changed careers in 2016. I still give the same financial advice, only now I give it to solar energy companies. I manage these solar projects with a close eye on prudent spending, and I make decisions on where and what to spend as if it were my family's own money. I think we can all benefit as a town when that level of discretion and scrutiny can be employed on projects we are considering for the broader community with a singular focus on how best to protect and spend our financial resources. Making thoughtful and timely decisions is critical for the work that we need to do in Garrett Park. But those decisions should only be made after understanding the view of all sides, after close collaboration with everyone who has an interest in talking and hearing about it. Only then can we do, as a council, what is best for the whole town, not just what is best for one or two impacted parties. There is so much that makes our town great. But one undeniable strength is the incredible diversity of perspectives and expertise that we have right here among our neighbors. But that is only a benefit if these insights are carefully listened to. It's only a benefit if we bring these diverse and fresh perspectives onto the council. In short, while experience should never be discounted, I believe we benefit immensely when new voices can be heard as part of the Town Council. If given the privilege of serving, I will work with all my energy, all my focus, and all my humility to maintain and build on everything that makes Garrett Park such an amazing place to live. Thanks so much, everyone, for being here and for the folks dialing in outside. Thanks, Steve.
All right, all right. Did I get everybody? Okay. Good. So please, come to the front and ask your question. State your name and your street, and we'll go from there.
All right, thank you. I'm David Rubenstein, and I do not have a question. I just wanted to kick off the questioning with some gratitude for the folks who are willing to serve us, the folks who have served us, the folks who run the community association, including the ones who get to sit back there, the folks on the camera, the folks working in our state government. It is just so lovely to be in this town that everybody described in such glowing terms. We, I just wanted, on behalf of the rest of us, to acknowledge the effort that you put in, the willingness you put in to serve, and the great results that you've achieved. So it's just a thank you.
Okay. Do we have anybody and any, please, come up. Yes, please, for the benefit of the folks in the interweb.
I think you have to, yeah, I think you have to stand next to the sign.
So actually, I want to reiterate what David said. It was kind of on my mind to thank all five candidates that are running for the Town Council. And it is really a pleasure to see, because we have had many uncontested elections. And I think it's remarkable that we have five very qualified candidates for three positions. And also, like David, I wanted to thank the Citizens Association, the Bugle editor and so forth, because they have also brought many new programs to the town, and I think we're lucky to have them. Right now, we have older people and younger people. And we've lived here since '72, so we're old. But I had a question, and I don't think it's the most important thing, but I needed some clarification. And I think I'm going to direct my question to Phil, because he has had the longest tenure. And I know also Steve is next. So it's not to the new candidates, but I thought it might be important, and I needed just a bit of explanation. And what it's about is one of the--
Could you state your name and residence?
I thought I, did I not say my name? Whoops. Glenda Ingham. And we live on Roca Bee. And we've been here since 1972, Ken and Glenda Ingham, and have two daughters that are pretty big now and live in California. But anyway, to get to the point, and I don't know what happened to the microphone, but I think it's okay anyway, because I can speak fairly loud, I think. Okay, so my question again was kind of going to be directed to one of the older candidates that have been here. I know Phil and also Steve have been here long. I'm going to direct it to Phil. And it was mainly for clarification. I didn't get a tangible copy of the Bugle, but I have what came through on the internet. And it was regarding one of the ordinances that is undergoing the legal procedure required by our charter to adopt ordinances. And it was regarding actually procurement procedures. And I was a little confused on it. So I thought, looking at someone that had been here longer, could explain it, but anyone else would be okay. And I think that, you know, it's about the town's requirements and expenditures for its purchases. And I was kind of going back, and I know things have changed. And I don't like to be the one that goes back, you know, we used to do it this way. But I was just a little confused. Pardon me. I was a little confused, because I think there was something mentioned in the Bugle about the desire to, and this was by Jerry Lee, one of our council members currently, that was interested in trying to help and assist small local businesses. So I couldn't quite understand about the ordinance. If someone, Phil or anybody, could explain it, I would appreciate that. And again, thank you all for running.
Thank you. So the ordinance was basically to formalize a lot of what we've been doing in the last few years. We needed to have a procedure both to protect the town and protect the town's employees with regard to purchasing and to also set up rules in terms of how much you could purchase with just a signature, how much you had to send out to bid, what state regulations might be in effect. Because some, the state basically regulates what we can do, what we can send out to bid or have to send out to bid and things like that. The thing about the local purchases, or, I'm sorry, local businesses, the idea behind that was basically to say that it would be nice if we could, we could work with local businesses instead of somebody that's, say, part of a major corporation. And we definitely have some discretion, say, under $5,000, which is one of the limits we had set where we could do this and try and favor local businesses. Of course, when we put things out to bid, we use eMaryland, which is the government or state bidding site. So it goes out to a number of people, whoever subscribes to eMaryland, for example. And that would include going to local businesses. And most of the work done here has been through a smaller and local business. But we had thought that the idea was to try and help them out. Again, it's basically to codify a lot of what we've talked about or have had as internal rules. We've just decided to make it formal now. And that'll help both future and current town employees as they navigate purchases.
Stephen, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, I could. It's good to finally have a more solidified procurement policy. We did have one, I think it was like a page or two pages, pretty generalized terms. I think it came about like earlier this, early, like the 2000s, maybe the 90s. But that even came to a head when we were doing the Safe Routes to the School project. There was at one point where the mayor at the time actually told us she didn't want to follow any procurement policies. We ended up working around that. But then later on, there was another part of that project that was sole sourced for 90, over $90,000 that we didn't even know what the total was on that until after, long after it was all done. But I'm very used to having a procurement policy. I've worked on public projects and architecture. I think the, back to, I think my first project was in the Clinton administration. I didn't work for Clinton, but it was that long ago. But I was just always used to like three or more bids and having things be open and fair and really be more transparent. So I welcome kind of solidifying a lot of what we have. And I would also support anything we can do to help small businesses. I worked for five years at a firm that, we said it on every project, we're SBA, we're a Small Business Association, qualified firm, we're a hubzone firm, et cetera, et cetera. And it was really a disadvantage working for some of those firms versus like a major corporation in what we did. So a lot of times, we had to prove double what we could do versus somebody that had a bigger name. So, you know, I look forward to having that improvement to our code.
And I don't want to put words in Glenda's mouth, but I do believe you were touching on a different, a separate-- on the, a different, a separate matter with the loss of contractors with the town who had been eliminated due to, I suppose there'd be disagreements as to why they were disqualified, but some might say due to technicalities, and so we lost our relationships with longtime contractors. So maybe to broaden this and give, give the other two a chance to respond, what, what's your philosophy on, on working with small businesses and is there, how can we, how can we improve the contracting process to, to include them, to better include small businesses?
I mean, it, it sounds like solidifying a procurement process is the right approach and doing it with an eye towards supporting small businesses. I think it's interesting, because what you just mentioned, because it also, there's an element of communication here, too, that if there's uncertainty within the community around why a certain decision was made, or why a longstanding business is no longer contracted to do the work that they had been doing for a long time, but people are uncertain about that, you know, I think that's an issue, and that's one of the things I'm particularly interested in, in helping to bring to the council is a little bit more transparency in our communications, so that we don't have to be wondering, you know, well, I used to see that business every, every day or around town, and now they're gone, and I don't really understand why. So, you know, I think the procurement work the council's been undertaking is, is good work and important work, but there's also that element of communicating out to the community, so everyone is aware of not just the policies and the, but the impact and on the town.
Yeah, I would just, I would just echo that, you know, certainly having a more formalized procurement process is, you know, that we can point to is, is helpful, small business, local business, minority business, to the extent that that's available. I think the transparency issue is, is one that is, it's really helpful, and everyone's busy, right? Everyone is looking for ways to best communicate, but I think, you know, good efforts and, and, you know, open efforts to be able to communicate why that, you know, why policies are being undertaken is important, and I look forward to kind of looking at where we are now and ways to improve that.
Good evening, everybody. Todd Malperio on Argyle, AKA The Sledding Hill. Steve, I know, I sensed a lot of frustration from your opening remarks about processes, so I was just wondering in this next term, is there's anything that you would do different to have a better outcome, or not? Thanks.
Great question. Appreciate that. Something I probably need to put more thought around, like trying to figure out what our processes could be, but I think maybe one of the big things is looking back at all the other different cities and towns and states and whatnot, and government agencies that I've worked on or worked with, and seeing what processes were really good that they did, and then seeing which of those that we could really emulate. I think to try to, we need to like, be transparent, be open, have an open process, but we need to find the right time to kind of say, hey, we're, we're past first base now, we're, we're concentrating on second base and not just keep going back and forth. I think that would be my big thing, I think, to try to figure out what I could suggest that we could do, because I've found our processes here are just different than anywhere else I've seen, and things take longer. I mean, a public project typically takes twice as long as a private project, but I feel like our public projects take twice as long as elsewhere. And I think the example that keeps coming to mind for me is, it's probably around 2009 or 2010 that I started doing the master plan and the design for Warner Circle Park that's over in Kensington, that's, took down the nursing home wing and, you know, restored the historic mansion on that and put together a plan for the park. That thing went through all kinds of trials and tribulations and changed its use and was looking for funding, finally locked in funding and a different use just recently. Now it's finally under construction, but I feel like we just don't, even though that one took longer, I feel like it was just a much more smooth process with public outreach and, you know, trying to synthesize all of the feedback we got into a productive and, you know, a good outcome. I think here we just, we kind of just keep churning on a lot of stuff, so I will take that responsibility. I feel like if I can suggest ways that we can get around that and prove it, everything for ourselves, I'm happy to kind of do that and hope others would get on board with it.
Does anyone else want to respond to that? Ways to improve the speed or not? If maybe it's a feature, not a bug?
I'll be happy to work on that one for you. So there's a couple of things that we have to keep in mind. One is that we are bound by some state rules, regs, so we can't instantly do things. If we look at something like Yendell Park, Yendell Park is getting stretched out a bit because we're changing the zoning, we're having the zoning changed, and when we change the zoning, that means we're going from a residential where a house used to be to a park. And as part of that, we are, we are forced, if you will, to have to go through a mandatory review process. In other words, it's a process where Maryland National Capital Parks and Planning reviews what we want to do on that site and then makes comments to us. Fortunately, the comments aren't binding, so that means that we can, we can decide to either take them or not. But that's one of those things where it takes time, and because it's a government operation and they've got a lot of other people they're serving, you end up having to get in line with everybody else to wait for your plans to go through and be approved. So that's an example of something where, you know, we're stuck. We can't really do a lot. Another thing that we've done and something I'm, I really like is that we try and get every resident's opinion or least input on something. And so by doing so, that's going to stretch things out a little bit, because we want to be mindful and give people a chance to say something, and especially during various phases of the, of the project. So some people say, well, just cut that stuff short or just do something once, you know, and then that's enough. But I think it's a continuous process, so it's something that we have to be mindful of.
I would just add to that, and I'll use Town Hall as an example, and I'll caveat or start with by saying, I was so impressed and almost moved by the incredible amount of work that's gone into the Town Hall project. You know, going back and reading minutes and looking at architectural designs and, and hearing what the townspeople had to say, an incredible amount of work has gone into that. And I've heard from a few folks that there is some growing frustration with the time it's taking, and one of the things that struck me was looking at the survey and looking at, I think it was in 2023, it was one of the first community gatherings to go over plans. There was a lot of ideas presented, and it seemed to me that one thing that might have helped that project from the start was to solicit whatever community input was necessary to really ground that project in a common set of principles or a mission statement, right? What is the aim of the Town Hall revitalization? Because even a few years in, there were folks who were saying, well, it's really for the community's use, and, and we need to have that in mind. There were some folks who were saying, well, but it also needs to be a rental space and a revenue generator, so we need to be thinking about that and with the scope of the kitchen. All really good ideas, all really worthwhile conversation and debate, but perhaps coming at a stage that then causes a bit of a reset and delays progress on getting it done. So, so that's one thing I would offer is, is, you know, when these big projects right at the beginning is doing the best we can to solicit the input necessary to ground ourselves in a common, and when I mean common, not just among the council, really among the town, understanding in what, what this project aims to do, and I think that might help move things along through the various stages.
Hi, Jean Haran, Cambria Avenue. I am a rule follower, which means I'm also a pain in the butt. I'll use the word butt because we have some fourth graders back there. But I'm trying to figure out, how are we running this? I thought each candidate was supposed to answer in some kind of rotation, every question. Is this something different this year?
I think we're having a normal ebb and flow, and when the energy runs out of a question and there's no signal that someone feels compelled to respond, they, I'm not going to force them to respond. I think this has been very enjoyable and friendly. Is there, is there a concern that you have?
Well, it's only the first time maybe ever that each candidate didn't get the opportunity to answer, and I'm not sure why that is.
I honestly don't know what you're talking about. I feel like this has been a--
We are young people, so it'd be nice of them to speak.
Okay, let me continue. Yeah, well, I am hoping that you'll all answer this. This is a general--
Okay, thank you. Get to your question, please.
Getting back to finances, and thank you for doing the homework. I appreciate that. What do each of you believe are the biggest financial constraints to Garrett Park over the next few years? Thank you.
John, do you want to take that?
Yeah, no, I, I think so. So I think I'll answer Jean's question by making an analogy and then coming back to the capital account within Garrett Park, but when, you know, my time in project management has served me well to the extent that we have a budget that is well grounded and that is known in day one, and we have created at that point parameters in which we can operate in, to Chris's point. And so that, you know, what happens within those parameters can certainly, can, can and will change, but the, you know, the budget needs to be followed, the steps need to be taken, so that we are able to, to get to where we need to be without exceeding that budget. I think the specific uses of the, you know, liquidity that we currently have in the capital account in Garrett Park, I look forward to seeing what the options are. I look forward to exploring those and seeing where the best use of those resources are. But I do, I do think there is a, a priority that needs to be placed on operating, on knowing what those parameters are, on knowing what those financial constraints are, and then being able to take on endeavors that are fully within those constraints. I think it's open for debate, and I think that everyone should be included in those. But I think, you know, the, the idea that we know what it is, we know what we're looking to accomplish within that, within that budget, I think is important, and it needs to be, I think it needs to be known not just by the council, but by, by everyone who's contributing their thoughts.
To piggyback on that, I know historically the town has received money from, at the state level, at the federal level. We're obviously in a time of uncertainty, certainly at the federal level, but even the state, Maryland, has a shortfall. And so I think as part of our projection, our budget planning, we need to prepare ourselves for, for that money to be less available perhaps than it's ever been, and that should be at the forefront of our decision-making and budget projections for the next few years and, and until things shift and, and the outlook brightens a bit.
Yeah, I think similarly what Chris was just saying, I'm literally just talking about this half the day today, working hotel development and design, and we were talking about all the unknowns with tariffs and the unknowns of coming from the federal level, and that all obviously trickles down. A lot of the state funding really comes from the federal, and state has, I can't remember how many, what the dollar amount was on the budget shortfall, but it's pretty, pretty large. So the council's already been talking about this, mayor's been leading a lot of discussions about this that, you know, with his knowledge from the, the last big financial crisis we had, the housing crisis in 2008. So we're assuming that the town government may need to be a little bit cautious. We're hopeful it's not as cautious or as much upheaval as there was back in that last time period, but that's kind of the way we're moving forward with things. We do have a pretty healthy capital budget, enough money to get some of these major top of the list projects done, but I think after that, we may have to be cautious until we know that things are going to stay a little bit efficient on the global financial level.
So I guess first is, we get our revenue from several main sources. Income taxes is one, property tax, revenue sharing from the state and from the county. We get some odd amounts here and there for, dedicated solely for road maintenance and so forth. But on the capital side, or I should say first on the, on the operations side, that tends to stay somewhat, somewhat flat, because it's mainly made up of our employee salaries, the healthcare benefits and so forth, and those are things that we don't really change. I mean, yes, I suppose we could lay somebody off, or if somebody left, we could not hire that person, but that may not be fair to those who are left. So in that respect, except for some professional fees, which are tied to some typical projects like lawyers for legal work we have and reviewing things, ordinances like, or the town's engineer who we have on retainer and does things like review our roads and help us with our capital planning for our infrastructure, that all stays constant. The part that can be variable is going to be the capital. Now, in the capital, we're spending a lot of money to renovate this facility, and part of it's just due to the cost of the material, and now we've got to add on, for instance, any impacts due to tariffs and so forth. And so we've also looked at allocating some money towards doing some renovation at some of the parks. But the big thing that we have out in about two, three years from now is going to be renovating some of our roads, because according to our engineer, these roads are going to need some work in the tune of maybe $800,000, $900,000. Now, obviously, we can look and see what we might be able to defer, although I wouldn't suggest it, because some of these roads, if you've ever seen them, there's not a lot under them, so it's not a great idea for us to do that. But we've, this ties back to the fact that we've taken some of the money that we had originally put away for the roads and used it for other things. So now we have to look at recharging, rebuilding that capital budget, so that when comes time to do the road work, we can do it. Granted, it's going to be two, three years from now, but we also have to consider the fact that as we renovate this facility, once we get into it, we kind of can't just decide to stop for a while, and we're going to have to look at accommodating things we don't know of yet. And one of the things, you know, we never thought of was these changes in tariffs and how that could affect us. So we're kind of constrained right now. There's not a lot of stuff we can do. Yes, we can take that money that we had allocated towards redoing the parks, and we can use that money for something else, but it's up to decisions. We've got to figure out, you know, what you want to do. So that's my take on it.
Thank you.
Hi, Tony Altar. I live on 11100 Kenilworth. This is our street right here. You know, it's interesting, I was just out with David Rubenstein and, because I wanted to tell him about the question I wanted to ask today. And funny enough, he said, let's step outside, so we stepped outside, and there was the very example that I wanted to ask this question around. And it's basically, you know, we talk about how politics is local and things start locally. Well, the issue that I'm bringing up in a question form here is the state of the very building that the town council is residing in. And for any of you who can remember, when you leave tonight, just go take a look at either of the sides of this building, maybe the back, and you'll see what a condition it's in. So for 20 years plus, I've been saying to the council, you know, let's do something. If it was our own house, wouldn't we fix this up? Why are we letting the siding just deteriorate? And there are other problems I pointed out. Well, that was like 20 years ago, and I've been saying the same thing for quite a long time, and it's been frustrating for me to see the building literally deteriorating on the outside. So my question, particularly for those of you who have spent eight or maybe 16 years on the town council while this was going on, I'd like to pose a question, which I hope will help the audience here differentiate between the candidates. The question's twofold. You know, what would be done differently than to have waited 20-plus years for this kind of work to get going? And secondly, you know, what would you do differently to avoid spending $3 million on this project, which is probably not the ultimate amount? It's probably going to be an overrun and a longer process, which all of these projects are. And when I think about that, I think about, you could buy two of the nicest homes in Garrett Park for that money and still have this building. So the money, the finances just don't really add up to me. So that's the second question, first being, what would you have done or would you have done differently if you were on the council at the time, hearing these comments from someone like me? And secondly-- comments from someone like me? And secondly, you know, would you justify today this kind of $3 million expenditure?
All right. Phil, do you want to take that first?
Sure.
Oh, and let me just say one other thing. I'm happy to hear very short, snappy answers. I think there's a lot of other questions that people have today.
Okay, well, I'll try and keep it simple. Basically, as we've looked at this building over the years, yes, we've decided that we needed to do something, but the more we look at it, we realize there's a lot more we needed to do. For instance, as part of the renovations, we will be removing the back portion of this building and replacing it with a new portion, because the back portion is some question in terms of its usefulness and its long-term survivability. There has been a lot of thoughts about, "Well, can we just do this and do that?" Well, we've been band-aiding this building for years, but the reality is, we need to do something to make it better and to set it up for us long-term. The other thing is, we have to comply with certain rules and regulations, like ADA.
It was never proposed to have band-aid solutions, so I just really want to set that clear. That was not ever the suggestion that it was a band-aid or a superficial improvement, never.
I did. I said that we have band-aided it. That's what I've said. We have band-aided this building, and that is fact, because otherwise it would have been totally renovated. But in any case, we need to do a heavy renovation, and unfortunately, no matter which way we've tried, we still keep coming back to, it's a lot of money. And because it is a building, it's a public building, a government building, we can't build something to be the same as one would find in a residential building. You know, things like ADA bathrooms, you know, that's, we have to relocate the bathrooms, and we're going to have to make some changes. There is also consideration for removing the bell tower, the add-on portion in the front here where the bathrooms currently are, to make it more historically accurate. All these things were things we've discussed and things that we've agreed on. So, in that respect, I think we've done about as good as we can. Certainly, there may be room for improvements here and there, but as we look at the whole picture, I think that it's, it's something that we were basically kind of confined by what we can do and what we need to do as part of state law and so forth to renovate the building.
I just have to make a correction on that point.
Tony, I'm sorry. Can we, can we?
Just to say, while he's misquoting what happened.
Can we, Tony, please?
That's what I made, but it's easily covered by the budget at the time.
All right. Thank you, Tony. Steve?
Okay. Some similar things to Phil, but I'm kind of proud of, proud of the inputs I've had on this. It was one of the reasons, again, why I ran for council was to be able to contribute on this. I was kind of concerned back then. Someone I knew was on the council was told that they were asked to find an engineer for town hall. I was like, "Wait, wait a minute. I designed places like historic buildings like this that were for community centers. You don't start with engineering. It's really an architect that has a sensibility to historic buildings." And it, just by chance, we ended up with, we actually got a surprisingly low number of bidders, but it ended up being, the winning bidder was the architect that we had that did the really successful renovation to Penn Place. But a lot of this, I've heard that a lot over the years about the deterioration of the siding, especially in the back. The town maintenance staff has actually been actively painting and restoring the siding out here on the front. This is the historic part. This part is not going to go away. The back was always very, very likely to go away. So, now, all that is planned to go away, so it doesn't really make sense to spend the fortune kind of doing it. I think I would answer the question about, "Could you have done less?" I've heard a chunk of people in town kind of frustrated that we are doing too much and saying, "Why couldn't we just do the basic scope?" I've also heard perhaps an equal amount of people saying, "Why are we stopping where we are? It's the key building in town. We should go for, make it as, the best as possible." I think we've gone somewhat in the middle of that, but leaning towards like having a lot of effectiveness. And I'm proud of a lot of things that I really, you know, initiated, you know, some of them alone, some of them not. But restoring the front, it's going to add back the daylight and the original windows that were in that front room. Instead of having it covered by electric panel, we'll move the bathrooms back to like a more secluded location, which is the normal way to do it, suggested, and we ended up adopting it. The idea of having an accessory room in the back that's a lot more functional. Some functions may be best suited in this room. Some may be better suited and choose that back room. Some may, you know, the really large things like the town dinner could use both. So, that was kind of the idea behind that. And I, the other thing was just doing the, the accessible bathrooms. The, the basic scope that we had that was kind of hanging around from back the mid 2010s was talking about making those two bathrooms into one and then taking away the piano room to make it a bathroom. I just feel like that would have been an absolute disaster. So, I think with all the thought that's been put to, into this, I think we have the right scope. And I, I'm very hopeful that we won't be anywhere near $3 million, but if we do end up there, I think we will need to kind of adjust, because it, you know, may be tough to say that this building warrants it with the kind of use and low or no fee that it warrants kind of that spend, but I think we'll cross that bridge if we get there.
John, do you have lessons?
Yeah, sure. I mean, thanks, Tony. And not having been privy, obviously, to the discussions up to this point, I know there's been a ton of really good work that goes into it. I would like to zoom out from the priority question, right? I think, at the end of the day, we have limited funds in good years and in, and in challenging years with tariffs and everything else, which is what we're looking at now. There are priorities that need to be made. If, if we are looking at those priorities, I think the town hall is incredibly important. It is a big part of our town. It is one of a number of priorities. I think some of which have been talked about tonight, Yendel Park, you know, there's, you know, some of the other parks in the area. These discussions need to be made, again, as if we're, we're kind of balancing our own checkbooks, which is, we want to do all these priorities. We have this limited budget. Here's what we can afford to spend on, on this particular structure. Important as it is, it needs to be incorporated into the overall budget that makes sense.
You reminded me of something I, I heard Mayor Keller say somewhere along the line. You know, "If everything's a priority, nothing's a priority," and that, that's such a hard, those are such hard decisions to make. I think one thing that I would like to, to work on is, in addition to getting town hall done soon, is what's the next town hall? You know, what is the five or 10, even 10-year projection? I, Barb alluded to in, at one point, you know, a lot of towns, comparable towns of our size are doing, you know, five- and 10-year strategic planning and projections, capital projections, you know. I think that's really important for us. We don't want to be caught flat-footed as things are deteriorating and suddenly we have a lot of priorities and not enough funding to get them all done. So, the more we can, while working on the, the priorities of today, be really identifying down the road, you know, what in three, five, seven, 10 years, where are we going to need to be putting our time and energy to maintain the steady improvement of things around town?
Are we allowed to tag on any additional comment, or should we stop?
Well, I do want, I have a follow-up question, I suppose, to grab the phrase, "What is the next town hall?" I've heard roads, I think, is, I think I've heard parks alluded to, but Steve, what is the next town hall?
The next big project? I think, I think parks is, I would agree, we need to plan ahead for roads, but I, I've long had the opinion that our consulting engineer is pretty aggressive on their grading of roads that kind of leads there. A lot of roads that still have good years of service to kind of like turning them over pretty quickly. Some of the things that they rank, one is the best and five, six is the worst. Some of the five, six are better than most of the communities around here. So, I, I don't want to totally ignore the need to do roads, but I just feel like it might be over-aggressive. So, I, I'd like to see things that have been, you know, standing still for all those past repavings, and there was a lot of good work done in the last 20, 25 years to, to improve our roads, but I'd like to see all these parks that we have a lot more potential for, for use by everyone in town to get those kind of things done. I think I could live with some, you know, C-plus roads for a few more years to get, you know, better than our D-minus on the parks. So, that's kind of my perspective. And I, I fully back the idea of doing a five, 10-year capex plan. It's part of what I do for my day job, and I, you know, some of the council members have had to endure me kind of pushing for changing that way of thinking, is I think for the longest time, this town has had a way of kind of saying, "Hey, we have $300,000 to kind of put in, you know, various capital budgets." I think Jerry Lee Bennett, one time she put it, she's like, "We're like spreading little pieces of peanut butter around, it's kind of like making little savings account," and then savings accounts, and nothing really ever got done. So, I'm, I'm much more on the idea of, "Hey, let's put town hall first priority, put that, you know, Cambria Field second, and maybe, you know, do like a park planning process." I pitched doing that last year, and I was surprised to walk in and find that that was something that one of the council members wanted to cut entirely, having an open public process. So, I, I think we just got to find a way to like prioritize those projects and, you know, really look at things that have been neglected for a long time and make the whole town the best we can, but doing in a sensible order.
John, what's the next town hall?
Yeah, what's the next town hall? You know, I, I think I, I think I share the sentiment on parks. I just, you know, one of the things that struck me is that, you know, we're talking about priorities here, and it's incredibly important. I think that, you know, we need to have a finite set of priorities, and we need to get, we need to set a budget around that. Before I moved to Garrett Park four years ago, I used to come to Black Market, not because of the food, nothing wrong with it, but I would just, I would drive around, and I would walk around. And what we now have here in this community, it's, we are literally walking in a, an arboretum. There are so many things that we have that are incredibly beautiful that, having lived in Northwest, having lived in Tacoma Park, I can tell you that we are the envy of a lot of places. So, a lot of the things that are wonderful about Garrett Park don't cost that much at all. We just have to be cognizant and maintaining them. I think that, I, I agree on the parks, nothing specific, but the, you know, if the parks are inconsistent with the beauty of Garrett Park writ large, it creates a head-scratching moment, I think. And so, being able to understand that we are going to prioritize that. We are going to have these open spaces. We are going to have areas where people can play, kids can play. I think that that is in line with the ethos of Garrett Park and everything that I love about this town.
I don't disagree with, with either of you. I mean, I, it's the public spaces where we have felt most welcomed and met our, our neighbors and had great conversations. I don't get to the dog park nearly as much as I would like, but I know how important that space is to folks. It's an important part of this community, and so, public space, public parks, you know, maintaining them, improving them where we need to, is, as you said, exactly in line with, you know, the, the way we should be stewards of, of this beautiful place. I obviously would be interested in what the engineers are saying about the roads. The roads are critical, yeah. And I know, and I, I won't, I won't, I, I'll say this, and then we can move on, because I know it's fraught, and there's, you know, I've been interested as I track some of the conversation amongst the council in the, in drainage and flooding issues some folks have faced. And I know there's people who have been deeply impacted by that and have not necessarily gotten resolution. So, that seems potentially costly and complicated, but it's the kind of thing we want to be looking at. And if not an immediate priority now, that's great, but it may be soon, and we need to be aware and factor it into all of these great ideas.
I just want to make a quick comment on that, if you don't mind, in that we are working on drainage, we are working on storm stuff. The problem is that it's at a level where we, we're not at liberty to discuss it.
Right.
So, unfortunately, I can't say anything more, but we haven't forgotten it, trust me.
No, I don't imply the council's not. I, I know you're limited in what, what can be said.
No, we are definitely looking at, and that's definitely a consideration. But I just want to make sure everybody knows, yeah.
Yeah, no, I didn't mean to.
We haven't forgotten.
Absolutely.
Hi, I'm Cindy Kratz. I live on Claremont Avenue on the south side. And on this topic of parks, I've been disappointed that there isn't a park of in Garrett, of Garrett Parks on our side of town. Oh.
Just speak in delight.
I'm sorry. I'm Cindy Kratz, living on the south side of Claremont, and I'm saying on this parks issue, I'm very disappointed that there isn't a Garrett Park, park on our side of town. Now, it sounds like all of you maybe live on the north side, but there's a few of us here on the south side. And about probably 15, 20 years ago, I actually asked the council in a letter to consider buying some of the empty lots that were available at that time, which are not now. I, I'm curious if any of you, all of you, have any ideas about how to establish such a park for us?
Well, the one thing I would say is, living on Strathmore, is our side of Strathmore and the other side of Strathmore, it sometimes feels like you're divided by like the Mississippi River, right? I mean, it's like I have neighbors who I wave to every day and have not had a full-blown conversation with since the day we moved in. And I only point that out to, to say that all corners of this town need attention and, and should have public space. So, you know, to the extent the council can, can deliver on that, I think is important, because it is, it sounds like not that big a deal, but, you know, if you're asking folks to have to cross every single time, it's, that is a busy road, and it's always busy. And so, spreading out the access to public space is, I think, really important.
John?
Yeah, I remember when someone asked me if I lived on the north side or the south side. I had to literally get my bearings and imagine where Wisconsin was, and I'm like, "Yeah, I'm north."
I agree with you completely. I, I think that Strathmore is a little bit more precarious than people imagine. You know, Yendel Park was a, was a blessing, right? That was kind of a situational thing, but I absolutely agree. I think that, you know, not having, I didn't realize that there wasn't a park on the south side. That, that's, that's something. That, that really is something. I think that, you know, the best way to go about that, I'm not sure what it is, you know, buying a vacant lot is probably a little bit less affordable these days in Garrett Park, but that's certainly one, one area, one priority. You know, just to put things in perspective, I think we were incredibly fortunate, at least I think this is confirmed, to, to receive the additional half a million dollars for the town hall. That, that is an incredibly large amount of money that can be used for the town hall. And so, to the, parks are time-consuming, but they are not on that level from a cost standpoint. I think that the point of having to cross Strathmore to, to find a park, I think that that's something that I would put very high on my priority list. And then just finding out, you know, the best place to put it and what that would look like is something that I would very much like to, to dig into as part of the council.
Phil?
First, let me put a plug in for my, one of my favorite organizations, which is Parks and Open Space Committee. We have meetings every month, and we'd love to see anybody show up. I was the liaison for a while. Lisa Mack's been kind enough to take over that, but I still attend the meetings anyway, and these are definitely spot, that's definitely a spot where your input would be welcomed. That being said, there actually is a park on the south side. The park on the south side is what we call the nursery school. The old, you can't use it during school time, that's right. However, after-school can be used, and the other side of it is essentially ours too. So, we have a, an empty lot, if you will. Small, but an empty lot on the other side that could be developed to be used for something else. But there is essentially, there is a park there, and yes, it is constrained to non, non-school days.
It's available after 1:30 p.m.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe we should have an adult place there.
Well, I mean, you could, and that would be, I mean, that could go there. Again, it's an empty space. It was designated, but sure, I mean, it'd be a great thing to do.
I'm, I'm Robyn Daly. I'm actually the nursery school's community liaison, and it is a community center. Can you not hear me?
Steve, did you want to respond? I will, yeah.
Hi, I'm Robyn Daly. I live on Kennelworth Avenue, and I am the liaison for the nursery school to the town. And it is a community center, and that building is available to be used outside of the nursery school hours for other community events. It can be arranged through me. So, and we are very happy to talk about improving that park facility. So, happy to do that. Thank you.
Chris, do you want to add anything?
What are the hours?
The nursery, the nursery school's hours are 9:00 a.m. to 1:30. We do have some Girl Scout troops who use it after-school, you know. Each one of them does it one day a month, so it's not fully occupied. They also run an after-care program, no, I'm sorry. They also run a... They also run a summer camp program for four weeks during the summer. Those are half-day programs. And of course, all of the people in the community are encouraged to send their children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews, friends, so it's open to everyone.
Quick question for you, Robin. Is the, I've never been inside. Is the whole first floor taken up by the classrooms, or is there a part that's more of a multipurpose room for?
There are two, there's one big classroom that's used for four-year-olds, and they attend every day of the week. There's another classroom that is used for two-year-olds and three-year-olds, and they alternate. So they're both in use all of the time. There's also something called the rug room, which is sort of an overflow room for the twos and threes. The scouts seem to like that room a lot, because it has a rug. And it's got a great history. That building, that community center, has a great history, and is available for community use outside of the nursery school. Some of you sent your children, grandchildren.
Thank you. Stephen, you want?
Yeah, appreciate the chance to just tag on. I had a similar asterisk, asterisk that Phil had, that there is technically town-owned park space on this side of Strathmore, but it does have an asterisk. It's really the nursery school, it's really the small children's playground. It's not as multipurpose perhaps as it could be. We also have access, it's a public park, a county-owned park, but the grounds of the school are all county-owned and accessible to all of us. But it would be more ideal if there was something in the heart of the south side, and I'm very sympathetic to that. I'm kind of, I surely can't claim that I've been perfect, but, but I feel like I've done the best I can on, you know, trying to be thoughtful about everything. One of the things that ever is a regret is, I wanted to suggest years ago, I did suggest it, it didn't really get any very far, was to take the lot that was for sale for a long time, what Oxford and Claremont, that could have been a park. It was a really challenging site to build on. It probably would have been more ideal, and probably a little bit more interesting, is a more nature, you know, stepped park, and, you know, probably mixed for all ages. But I think we missed the boat. But I think those are the kind of things I, I think we all could do better, is just like try to be as creative as we possibly can on a lot of those things. But I think to do the best we can now, is something that's perhaps a little bit more in the heart of its community. I think we, I continue to feel that we should look at the front of this building, and even the back. I know a lot of people like to go back there, just kind of relax in the, what they call the garden. But I think the front perhaps should more, should almost be like a little bit more plaza-like, where that could be that sort of, you know, not really a playground, park, but a, you know, a place to sit and relax. Most of the time, this building is not in use. So I think there could be a good way to get multipurpose out of this property for us.
Good evening. My name is Jerilee Bennett, and I live on Keswick Street. I have a question about apropos the community center. The town is a building and facility owner. We own multiple properties that we lease out and have business relationships with organizations. We have the post office. I hope they'll stay. We'll see if they still exist in a year. We have the Black Market. We have other leaseholders at Penn Place. We have the nursery school that leases out the community center. We have the pool board that leases the pool space. I'm curious to know from the candidates, if you think our town approach as property owners should be the same or different when it comes to private nonprofit organizations such as the pool board or the nursery school that operate facilities for the benefit of residents and others? Or should the approach be the same as it is with business, private businesses such as Black Market and postal service? And how would you approach those differently if it should be different? And why?
All right, who wants to go first on that one?
I'll take a stab at it.
Here we go.
Not being privy to all of the numbers involved, I mean, I love that nonprofits are a part of the business community in Garrett Park. I've spent my whole professional career just about working in nonprofits. And I imagine some of the balance that's trying to be achieved is, you know, those are also really important revenue generating opportunities for the town. And so when you talk about the differences in kind of approach or how they're treated, I don't know if you're, if you're talking specifically about sort of financially, making it more incentivizing nonprofits to be using those space as opposed to businesses. I mean, that's, I think that's a delicate balance, and I would sure would be ashamed to lose the nonprofit presence. I think I'm just a huge believer in that, but I'm also, you know, I'm thinking about our conversation from 45 minutes ago, and financial projections, and, you know, federal funding, state funding, I think keeping an eye on making sure revenue is coming into the town is really important. So striking that balance is critical. I know this is not a super-specific answers. I don't know what is charged for each year, if they're, you know, prorated for nonprofit use, but keeping nonprofits seems critical to me. Generating revenue from those properties also seems critical. So strike that balance.
Anyone else?
I could jump in maybe a second. I think we already do kind of balance things out a little bit. Like, we charge the market rate for things that are for-profit businesses. So there was, recently, there was a lease renewal for Black Market, and that was adjusted kind of to the current rates. One of the spaces up on the top floor of the town office, or the town, or Penn Place, was recently rented out to a contractor that we work with on the IT side. So we're getting a little bit more there. That, you know, there's another one that's market rate. But I think there's, there are also places like here and nursery school and the pool. I think it doesn't make sense, I don't know what the market rate comparison would be, but I think they get pretty good sweetheart deals on a lot of those things. And I think the pool and this one, most everyone would support, because it's probably more than half of the town goes and joins the pool. So it's sort of like a town asset. Nursery school is a little bit different. I think there's a portion of the class that's from Garrett Park, but I found it interesting that all the different people I've dealt with from Kensington Government, they later divulged to me, like, when they reached out to talk about something, that they told me that they knew, they got the contact, because they, they had kids that came from Kensington, or Parkside, or Parkwood, or whatever it is over there, that came to our nursery school. So I just don't know, you know, how do those people that live outside of the town and aren't taxpayers, how do they contribute to it? Because we put a pretty healthy amount of money, it seems like, pretty regularly into that. So I support keeping it, but I feel like perhaps that's something we should be looking at on an ongoing basis, is, is there a fair balance of town taxpayer-funded versus all the other people that take, you know, the benefit of that? I think a similar thing, a lot of people have told the stories that they worked on, like the rental rates for this, this place here. There's a lot of organizations that get either a very low rate or free. And I think it's a very tough issue, because we're, we have a pretty hefty renovation coming in this place, and I think it would be pretty price-sensitive. So if the price has changed a lot, we might get a lot of people that feel like, hey, we're not gonna, we're not gonna, if it goes from $300 to $500, we're gonna pass. But I wonder if, you know, our prices on those kind of things that came up 20 years ago, they don't need to be revisited, but just kind of revisited carefully. So I think we all, in summary, I think we already have that balance, but I think it's something, it's probably worth like taking a 2025 look at.
Yeah, the only thing I would say is, I know that on, as a member of the pool board, we're having ongoing discussions on the lease rates, bringing those a little bit more in line with the market. I think that, and again, I don't know the commercial terms of what Black Market is paying, but I suspect that, you know, they're paying a fair rate. You know, for me, I don't, I think that as it currently exists, you know, the one question mark is, do we rent, you know, do we rent this facility out? I don't know what the intention or what, you know, what the folks in our town think about that. I think that that's, I don't even know if the town council has had discussions around that, but that's, you know, that's certainly one area on the commercial side that can be investigated. But I do think that, you know, the balance right now, Jerilee, is, you know, looking, when we first moved here, I remember thinking, wow, there's one, there's one business in the entire town. That's, that's amazing, and it's also kind of romantic. So I think that, to the extent that that, that doesn't button, you know, butt up against, you know, financial considerations, I think it's, you know, it's a pretty decent equilibrium. I just, I haven't heard, you know, arguments to the contrary.
So I'll, having gone through a bunch of this, I was actually party to the original lease. I helped negotiate the original lease for the community center and for the nursery school organization. So a couple of things about that. While the town did acquire that, the nursery school organization put a lot of money, a lot of sweat equity into that thing, and they really brought it up from what it was when Capital Parks and Planning owned it. And as a town, we don't put a ton of money into it. I mean, after we got done with the initial work on that, on the area around it, the last thing I remember working on for that was to upgrade some steps. We did an upgrade on steps. We did an upgrade in the parking lot. We had to address a water problem, because the Catholic Church was getting all our water, because there was no way of trapping it, so we had to deal with that. But really, except for those infrastructure-type improvements, we have not done anything to the building per se. I mean, I think, yeah, we fixed a slab of concrete somewhere, because it was a tripping hazard. But nevertheless, nursery school tends to be self-supporting, and as a result of the town not putting a ton of money into it, yes, they do get a better rate than if we were to try and make it a commercial rate. But I think there's, you know, there's a little trade-off there. Swimming pool, when you consider that, in my full disclosure, my wife used to be president of the pool board for a number of years. But when you look at it, it's, it's a town amenity. It was something that was originally started by the Garrett Parkers back in the day, where everybody contributed, I don't know, it was $5 or something, I forget. And we built the first pool, which is now essentially the family pool, then we built the lap pool and the kiddie pool. All that was done with pool money as an amenity to Garrett Park, and you'll even hear realtors talk about this amenity of the, of the public swimming pool. You do have to pay dues, as I'm sure everybody knows. And if we were to, say, charge market rate for that property, now all of a sudden we'd have to jack everybody's dues up in order to cover it. So it's almost like a tax on ourselves. So the question is, does the benefit of having this amenity there privately run, so the town doesn't have to mess with it, just rent the land, things like that, I think that it, that it's something that, one of those cases where it's a public benefit, and we should, you know, leave it the way it is. The rate does go up like 10% every year, which is not a lot, when you look at how much the, the base rate was to begin with. But I don't see it as a moneymaker. As far as this building goes, we had a big debate about five, six years ago about what the rates were going to be. And one of the overriding things at the time was, we didn't want to make this a moneymaker. Now, that doesn't say this can't be revisited. It doesn't say that we shouldn't revisit it, because it's been a number of years, and we should look at our clientele. And we did have carve-outs for certain groups, the women's club, and any of the standing committees that we have, like Arboretum, Posco used to meet here, but now it's nice we can meet in the town office, because we're small. But in any case, you know, there were certain carve-outs for certain groups, and there's a rate for residents, and there's a rate for non-residents. So certainly it's something, yeah, we could probably take a look at, but, and maybe people want to change and say they want it to be a moneymaker, but for right now, we kind of took the decision that this wasn't going to be a moneymaker, which also meant that we weren't going to try and actively market it. So, anyway, there you go.
Thank you. Let's have this be the last question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So Gina Montalda, Kenny Moore Avenue. Here in all candidates, I can see how important is to have institutional knowledge preserved. At the same time, we acknowledge how much our community has been growing. Along those lines, I wanted to ask each of the candidates about terms for council members. If elected or re-elected, would you be open to discuss, to discuss specific service terms for elected members? Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Chris, you want to take that?
I generally think term limits are... She asked, she asked about term limits for council members. Yeah, which we don't have. I'm generally in favor of a fair and reasonable term limit. I think turning over leadership is a good thing, and staggering it in such a way that you're maintaining institutional knowledge, and you're bringing in new folks, and you're, a new crop of leaders emerges. I think it's obviously worth a robust discussion, but just in principle, the idea of term limits, you know, I think is a good one.
John?
Yeah, I, you know, I, the organizations that I've, I've been involved with have benefited immensely, both from the experience that, you know, existing members can bring. That institutional knowledge is really, really important. I also think that, you know, I mentioned it in the opening, as I meet new people, I still can't believe our town is only 900 people, whatever it is, because I feel like I'm meeting new people, you know, every single day. It's just amazing to me, the backgrounds that we have, the, you know, where people are working, but where they've been, you know, where, you know, their perspectives. And I think that, you know, it really doesn't take away from the incredibly valuable input of folks on, you know, currently on the council, to be able to hear from diverse voices who may be discouraged from, from joining the council because of, you know, either of the lack of term limits or a lack of turnover. So as I have these discussions, you know, with folks around town, I'm just, I would love to hear from more folks. I'd love to get more diverse viewpoints. I think we would benefit as a town from that.
Phil?
Well, obviously, it'd be part of that, right? So interestingly enough, a number of years ago, when I joined the council, I brought up the idea of term limits. And the first thing I was met with was, well, you already have term limits, because just don't vote them back in again. And that was the, that was the standing line. And so that's kind of the way it ended. However, I'm not against term limits, but what I have to temper it with is that we've had, and it's been brought up earlier, we've had uncontested elections. This is like the first major contested election in a while. I've gone through a couple of them where it was, I'll call it walk-on. I mean, it was basically me running for my seat again. There was nobody else there, which I'm perfectly happy, by the way, to keep serving. But we have to temper it with, sometimes people don't want to join. I mean, one of our mayors was the only person who really wanted the job at the time, recently. So if there's more involvement, I think it would make some sense to have term limits, but I do believe that we have to have institutional knowledge, and we have to temper it with, we're a small town. A lot of people are busy. Maybe people don't want to necessarily sign up for the job. I mean, fortunately, we've got people now, but hey. And, you know, people like me, I bring the institutional knowledge along with my listening abilities. So we do have, you know, we try and solicit those new ideas.
All right, Steve?
It's an interesting point. It's actually a question that's popped in my mind a couple times over the years. I've wondered it off and on. I didn't even realize, like, the pool board had a term limit until a couple of years ago. I wonder if it wouldn't be a decent idea for here. Like, if I'm successful being re-elected now, I'd like to finish out those projects, but that would put me out to 10 years. I wonder if that's not fair as well. And I also look back at kind of, I did a lot of volunteer work before. I was even joined the council, thinking, so there's only one year that I've been in town that I wasn't doing this. And it's pretty time-consuming, and it's not just the preparation just for the meeting, but it's the kind of like the thoughts you have going off and on, like, oh, you know, here's a perspective on this or that, and trying to, you know, consolidate all in your mind. It's kind of like, sometimes I wish I had the time back. And it's one thing I've thought about, and I think the other thing is, I have a lot of expertise, like Phil has a lot of expertise. A lot of people that have done this for multiple terms have had a lot of expertise, but there's hundreds of other people in this town that have a lot of expertise, and it might be good to open things up to fresher perspectives. And one of the things I always wondered, we did have a couple uncontested elections. I think, Phil, you and I were both relieved that we didn't have to do this early. And I think it was '21, and maybe '23 was two in a row, but just because of the circumstances with COVID and whatnot, that there weren't, there were uncontested elections. But I wonder if there's not, and I've heard this a little bit around town, you know, that there's not like a sense that, hey, that there's like an insiders' club of people that are very active in town things, and I'm not going to be welcome, or I wouldn't really have a chance.
be welcome, or I wouldn't really have a chance, or I wouldn't barely be recognized, I, I wonder if, you know, things like a term, maybe that would just open up, you know, the floodgates of, maybe we wouldn't have uncontested elections if it didn't feel like you're really, it's such a major change to, to change something, change a direction, so the more and more I think about it, I wonder if it's not a good idea for us.
Okay, now we're gonna do closing statements, we're gonna go in reverse chronological order, and I will not forget you, John, because you're going first.
Thank you. This is, this has been great, I was not sure what this was gonna look like, this is my first one of these, so thank you for welcoming me and, and my fellow candidates, and Steve, you and your, your crew, it's, it's really been great. You know, I, we talked about it today, but I, I really do have a commitment to transparency and accountability in not just kind of the work, but in, in everything that I do, and I think creating a shared purpose allows entire teams on the work side, but also communities to feel inspired for the future and to really participate in the process. I feel the town council has a responsibility to truly represent our entire community, and that means taking the time and providing the space to hear perspectives from everyone interested in providing their insights. I think we also have a commitment to make prudent decisions that will benefit the community as a whole with thoughtfulness and also with purpose. If I am elected to serve on the town council, I will work tirelessly to hear, to understand, and to graciously represent the entire community. I really have been humbled to be given the opportunity to express some of my views tonight. I look forward to answering any questions that you might have. I will be at the post office on Saturday, not as much as a, as a constricted format, but look forward to seeing everybody. Until then, thanks everyone so much, thank you for coming out, have a, have a great rest of the evening.
Okay, Phil?
Yeah. So, I've really enjoyed sitting at the council table and being, being your representative. One of the things I can say is I'm definitely interested and really like to get people's opinions and have transparent government. An interesting thing is, we're looking right now, is I actually pushed for and originally organized having video. Now, that was right about the time of COVID, so it really came in great, but my idea behind it was that a lot of people sometimes can't leave their houses, you know, they've got little kids or they've got older parents, they've got whatever the case may be, or like for the last council meeting, I was up with my dad in Canadegwa, so, I mean, up in New York. So, it's something to try and get people to come in, and I believe that if we want more candidates, more people need to participate just to see what's going on, and it's great that we've got two fresh faces here, and if that continues, that, that would be excellent. But I, again, will continue to solicit opinions and push for making sure that we've got adequate, we've got adequate input from the town at every stage of the way as we work through our various projects and look at what might be the new projects. And I've enjoyed working, even though I've had to stop sometimes, I've spent hours working on a particular project for the town. My most recent example was, for instance, the lighting on Waverly and looking at some of the technical aspects, but I've enjoyed it and I feel it's my way of giving back to the community and helping people out, and I also am able to share some of my knowledge of things that can be done, can't be done, or maybe we should explore again. So, thank you and please vote for me.
Steve?
I'll start, I, I didn't really have a prepared closing, but just some thoughts, I jotted down that I thought about, first, I'll thank Phil for the idea of the video, like I was very scared of it, to be frank, when it first happened, as you can tell, I'm not a polished, you know, salesman, politician kind of a guy, but I was a little bit nervous about doing it, but I really appreciate it now, and we're able to refer back, and I feel like it is very welcoming that anybody can, can join it, I, I wish more people would join it, because I find it, sometimes it's, it's dispiriting, is a word I think I used to discuss it with one resident, that there's, there's really, a lot of times we, we don't have anybody in the audience or on there, but then we have a lot of assumptions and misunderstandings about what is really happening, and then we get, get told that, well, I didn't know, I don't attend to the meetings, and then you might say, well, read about in the Bugle, there's a summary, why I didn't read that either, there's all the information, can I just find out what's going on? Well, all of it's on the town website on purpose, but, you know, just, it's really hard to get that information about, so I, I wish more people would kind of just like tune in, even if you're just like cleaning dishes or whatever, just kind of unwinding, just kind of get a sense of things, but I think that, and another thing, it was a misunderstanding, I think before when I was talking about, if we can kind of like close the book properly around open public processes, I wasn't at all saying that we should, you know, kind of rush through things, I'm, you know, 10 different ways I've learned of how to do these things with public projects, even learned about it in grad school, so I think there's a way to do things open, do them right, and then have realistically transparent, have, have an opportunity where everybody around town can have a chance to opine, and we did that purposely with this town hall, is, I was one of the ones that was pushing for this too, has got a, a card out with a QR code that anybody in town, like people that may not even know that we have a town government, would be able to see it and be able to take part in that survey, and I, I think back to the example I used earlier with the Warner Circle project over in Kensington, that we, we don't rush through anything like that, I just thought back, we did two big open public meetings in the Kensington Armory for the concept phase, two more in the schematic phase, I went to the planning board twice about it, so a lot of times we got really good feedback, really good, you know, applause at the end of it, and I think it's funny that that property is probably faced by about 20 or 30 houses, I think we got more comments on, just from the immediate neighbors of Yandle Park on, than we did on that with like 20 or 30 houses, so I just feel like it's just, I don't know where the, what we can do, but it just seems a little bit, we just do things differently here, so I'd like to find a way, we can kind of find out what's the broad public benefit, and we can find a way to move forward that's really sensitive to everyone. You know, I think, and it's just funny, because we, we spend a lot of time having all these public meetings, and I, I think, I was looking back at some old documents, I found it funny, it was one resident actually expressed disappointment that they learned about something from a town council meeting, that's the purpose of having all these meetings, so that's another reason why I feel like, like they were, they seemed disappointed that they, that they didn't know about it ahead of time versus finding out in the public media, it's the whole reason why we have these things, so good, I think it's another good reason why we should, you know, really hopefully encourage a lot more participation, but I think in summary, those kind of disappointments aside, I really just, you know, want to get there with that postcard, picture-postcard vision, I think we should do a lot better, make better progress and do everything we can to kind of make our town look really good and be as functional as possible from, you know, every different part of it, and not just, you know, kind of just keep getting stuck on various things, so I'm happy to do my part for at least two more years to, to get there, so.
Okay, I'll keep it brief, it's been a good, robust discussion, if my calculations are right, the third period is just getting underway. I, I really enjoyed this opportunity to sit and hear from you all and engage in dialogue and, and, you know, to these fellow candidates who are all highly qualified and, and some of whom have been doing exceptional work in this town for a really long time, it's a real honor. My professional life, I talked about this in the Bugle, not as much today, is all about communications, and it's something I'm passionate about, it's something I've heard from a lot of folks about that we can improve, one of the tensions in communications is there's always the sense, well, we're putting it out, we're putting it out, you can tune into the video, you can do this. It's not always about the volume, it's sometimes it's about sort of the messaging, and the medium is the message, and getting communication to people where they access it, and this town, and Barb deserves a lot of credit, I mean, the amount of information out there is immense and impressive, but I would like to really think through a strategy to make sure that everyone feels as though they're being communicated with, they have avenues to solicit feedback, and that the communication is swinging both ways, there's a lot I think we can do to improve that, I would look forward to doing that, and many other things. I'll try to make it to the post office too on Saturday, but if not, feel free to reach out, I'd love to chat with anyone about anything, so, thank you, and thanks Steve and the Citizens Association again, really appreciate it.
Nice time for everybody.
That's a wrap. Good night, everyone.